Excellent, so we're gonna call the meeting to order at six twenty-nine. Thank you all for joining, we do have a quorum in the room. On our discussion tonight, we have one agenda item. And that is to talk about the board's point of view on submitting the Ag and Markets grant under the LVC for for Frenchtown Market to continue operation. So in front of you, and for those on the phone, you got it via email. Here's a series of talking points that had happened over the last few days. So first of all, there were kind of two issues that were discussed when we didn't know the amount of the grant that was being asked for. So one of those was the way the grant is structured will be the lead agency on it. We were responsible for a ten percent amount of money. There was some discussion about, did it seem right that we would put ten percent of our funds against one business, when really we need to do broad economic development? Deb and Dick McSherry graciously came forward and offered to cover that. The amount of money that came into Scott was three hundred and one thousand dollars, so it's a thirty percent match. We had talked about two fifty last week, but it came in at three oh one.
You mean it's something ten percent match?
The ten percent match would be thirty K, so talked to Dick about increasing it from twenty-five to thirty. Dick, do you want to just talk at this point a little bit about sort of your thought process and why you're, you know, basically making this donation?
Well, it, it, when I heard about French, you know, it was apparent that something was going to happen sooner or later. And and, you know, we know the cast of characters and I think there's been a fair effort to meet what was presumed to be a good model. It's, we all know what it's like to have a business in the Thousand Islands when you have so many people leave as of the beginning of school every year for, I don't care where they're from, but it's, it just happens that September rolls around and first of all, we lose the people who are waiting tables at the restaurants and then, then, then it just goes from there and but I grew up, I grew up in Watertown in Alex Bay, so I, you know, nineteen forty-nine, I was born. And I remember my father saying, hmm, this is, you know, this is part of our pathos that we, you know, we work like hell for it seems in the winter time, in the spring, the summer. And then things in the fall just go back to, well, we'll go on unemployment or something like that. And individual businesses just really suffer. And it's been the same essential playbook for so long and, and I guess one, that's one of the reasons I came back here because I, I, my career, I started in nineteen seventy-three at Samaritan Cape, putting the first two hundred and seventy-two patients in. And then decided, oh, I think I better go back to school. Masters at Syracuse and, and when I had a career in healthcare, but always wanted to come back and participate like my parents did. Not so much in Watertown because I, it's not, I don't have a domicile there. But we've, we have lots of friends and, and relations and I just, when a, when a, when a municipality, no matter how big, starts to lose essential services, and certainly a grocery store is one. You know, it's, in the bay, the essential service that really kept, keeps everything running is the hospital. And I've been on that, I was on that board for eight years or so. You know, you want to move on to different things and you might find that, you know, people don't do business the way you thought you, that you should do business. And I, I, for a while, I was saying, I know there's a, you know, do people really understand there's a difference between ethics and legality? We can still be legal and be so unethical. Well, that's, that's what you kind of get sometimes, but at any rate, we just, we just, Debbie and I immediately, because we were really involved in establishing the food pantry. We just knew this was going to be something that if, if there was any possibility of assisting the village and the town and the, and the provider with a second chance and I think it, the summation that I'll, I'll leave, have left myself with right now is, I think there's a willingness, my, my understanding, there's a willingness the part of the owners to, or at least one of the owners, the other one has not even, hasn't been apprised of it yet, the senior, that they're willing to give this a good go and, and a good faith go. And I think, I think you, I've seen this before where people are just so surprised that anybody has, would step up and say, we'll, we'll put some skin in the game. If you'll be serious, we'll be serious. And I think that's been stunning from what I've seen so far. So, you know, to me, the town wins either way by the prescription that we've, certainly Mary drafted most of it, but certainly a reasonable person would say, if we're going to put, you know, my, our few shekels in to a state-funded grant, the very least we should get is a better physical plant. Not necessarily physical plant, but a better physical plant which, for which to sell. And so why not? I mean, it's, it, to me, I thoroughly instantly understood the fact that the owners would say, and I don't have much in to, you know, really? Well, you've got to come up with the monies once all of your renovation work and implementation of new, either, either has new systems or he has just new state-of-the-art stuff. When you open your doors again, you're going, it's going to cost you because you have to have a, an inventory of some level. And I think that's scary to the person right now, or the person we talked with. That being said, it's something to work, for him to work on. I don't get the feeling, by the way, that there's significant debt. I really don't think that there is. I don't, I haven't asked for a balance sheet. I don't know what they have for balance sheets. You know, I don't know whether this has been on somebody's basic accounting spreadsheet system. I don't know what they, what their accountings are. I think we should, we should save something certainly. And that's, that would be one of the prerequisites that, don't surprise us with, you know, a hundred grand worth of debt. I don't think there is. He just talked about there being debt for commodities. Or maybe, maybe debt for that. He was talking about a six-day turnaround of, you receive the product and then, you know, you issue payment for it. I don't know where he stands with that. I have no idea. I don't get the feeling by the discussions that, at least, Rebecca Dowling is the, is the, is the Food Pantry Manager or Executive Director, excuse me. And she has met with the surefire people and has no indication that there's a, something bad that, that Kate Vincent needs to be aware of as far as debt is concerned. So I don't get that there's much, if any. It's just that, you know, they're, they're saying, we've got a tired system. We've got tired everything. And we're tired because we don't know which way, which way to spend a penny in rehabbing what we've got. We're certainly aware of it. So to me, it's, it's a very worthwhile investment on our part and, you know, it's, it's that. It's just an investment.
So kind of the way we left it with Dick and Deb when I spoke with them earlier today is that we would kind of do, we don't need their thirty K until we know there's a grant. We just need to show that we have the money, which of course we do have the money, right? When they look at our balance sheet, we have enough money. We just know that, that there was a feeling on part of the board that us using our money on one business didn't feel right, right? Because it's not a broad thing, which is what we're trying to do with an economic development mission. So the second part of what we see here, so let me publicly thank Deb and Dick for stepping forward to caring enough about the community to say, we want to help save and anchor business. So I think, you know, it's huge. But what we did, as we talked about it, were some stipulations for the Shavestes. We did meet with Mike today and we went through these. There was only one where he took a little pause and I'll point that out. But you can see that we want some skin in the game. We want to make sure that they're going to be there through installation and that they will operate the store after the completion of installation for one year, year round. Now, that can be superseded by whatever the grant says, right? So if the grant says they have to be in business for three years, it's three years. And he understood that, but we don't have that level of detail and the information that Scott was able to get because we couldn't start on the grant till after the question period was over. So the grant agreement will certainly lay all of that out, but we made that clear in Mike. The other thing is that if it needs to be sold, if they decide at the end of that period that they have a buyer, that we would, we want it sold to be a food store. We don't want to sell to somebody to buy it into apartments or put a gym in there or whatever the case may be. It means, I mean, the point of this is saving the grocery store in the village of Kate Vincent. Before I get to the last major bullet, any questions or discussions on that section?
How will that be accomplished, the after-one-year period stipulation?
Well, I mean, at that point, they could go out of business as long as the grant doesn't say that they have to stay longer. My guess is, and Scott sort of backed me up here, it's probably more on the grant like three to five years.
But the more part of, but it needs to be sold to someone who run building a food store. How do you enforce that?
Our, our, at least what I would like to recommend is have the Shavestes come back to us. There was one on the next bullet that they want to talk about, but that we actually had a contractual agreement that a lawyer writes for us and that they sign. So the, the thing that could happen with that, Carol, to your point, is, right? They could run it for one year and then they're done. There's not much, you can't force a person to stay in business, right? But the idea here is that the building would have been, and the business would have been so upgraded that hopefully they would, if they wanted to get out, that there'd be a buyer sooner rather than later. But we can't force somebody to stay in business. I mean, we can for this, this little period. I mean, what do others think?
Yeah, I agree. Part of it's a good faith. I mean, it, it's more of a handshake thing than anything else is it's their pledging to the town after the town has pledged to them. There's many different ways that they want to get out of it, that they can get out of it. The truth is there, but they, you know, the other thing is if they default on it and, you know, in bad faith, then they're gonna get run out of town.
Yeah. I mean, the thing is, it's a small town and it's, and this is extremely difficult for the family. It's a very emotional time, but it's also a very emotional time for the village because people don't have, you know, a grocery store. So in the next section is where there was, so I asked for this stuff by February one. And the reason I asked for it by then is the grant will be awarded in March. And, and this gives us an off-ramp. So if we don't get these three things, we can say, and I know it's not a good idea, Scott was very clear. It's not a good idea for us to refuse a grant. But if they can't do these three things, I think we say to New York State, we're refusing the grant because the recipient isn't viable. And we're not going to waste the state's money. And I hope that, I mean, that is like, absolutely hope that's a last-ditch scenario, but I think it gives us that off-ramp. So for those three bullets, the one that Mike had angst about was originally it just said, it was sufficient funds to restock the store for April, right? They're supposed to reopen in April, you got to restock it. And he said, well, what does that mean? And, and I, and I was like, okay, that's fair, right? I mean, does that mean that there's got to be fourteen cans of peas on the shelf? Or does that mean that you got, you know, meat, produce, milk, bread, and there's some dry goods on the shelves? You know, what, what is restock? What, even if we weren't involved and their plan of record was to reopen in April, what, what does that look like, right? So he said for his distributor who gives them, you know, who they get most of their dry good type stuff through, that they have a six-day net and that there's no problem with them getting that. But of course, you got to think, you got to be able to start up. So you've got to have money in the cash register for that first order because you only have six days before you have to pay it.
Yeah.
So what I said to him before we got to the point of a contractual agreement where we have a lawyer drawing it up, he needs to provide us, not today, but he needs to provide us what that looks like. What is restock? What is the floor plan? And I said, there's nobody on our board who is a professional grocer, although I do live with one, who thought his equipment list was extremely good, just to make you guys all feel good. Because we got the entire list of what was the three hundred and one thousand dollars and he, I did have one.
Did it include installation?
Yes, it included installation, new point of sale, you know, less freezers, coolers, you know, new slicing machine for the deli. That was the, I told Mike, that was the only thing Neil said. I said, ooh, I would have gone for an automatic one. And I said, well, honey, you can't have everything. But, but overall, he felt it was robust enough when he looked at what, why he put together. But I said, we're not going to say to, we're not going to get this floor plan or footprint in, you know, February and say, oh, we think you should move the deli case. Like, no, that's, we just want to make sure there's a plan. Like, he knows by February one how that new store is going to lay out. And then we did ask, and he had no problem with the sharing some financial records with us at that point. The reason I gave him till February is because that gives him time to pull all that together and it gives us time, an off-ramp if we need to on the grant.
Scott, when, when would this grant be awarded?
Best guess, February, March?
I think you said, I thought you said March twenty twenty-five somewhere.
Yeah, I, I think it says no sooner than March twenty, or they're estimated, but you know the state. Yeah, I'd say March.
So then, so then, so then, we finally get the money awarded, then he orders the equipment. Then you got the, how long is that? What's lead time? Did he have lead times on any of the stuff?
Sure.
Well, I mean, there will be lead times. There wasn't in any of the documentation I saw. So I mean, that's all part of it.
We're not opening in April, so we're on hold for this.
No, because open as is in April or do the construction, but, right? So I, I have a question with like no liens, no, like no, you can't have ten dollar bar open bank, that's.
No.
Well, that's what, no, there are no liens on the business.
Well, I wouldn't expect it.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any mechanics liens. I, I, I really, we don't know.
I agree. I don't think that's fair for us to say no liens on the business. Like, I think if, I, I just, that's, no is none in my book, right?
Maybe. I think when you get their financial statements, if there are any liabilities, liens, loans.
Right, I understand that, but for us.
I think the word that's missing here is delinquent or something like that.
I just think that no means is very harsh.
If he in terrible financial shape, then is this going to go anywhere physically?
Right, but we'll know that with just his financial.
So how much, how much do we work that then?
I think business and income taxes and financial documents to show, no, maybe substantial liens or just, what'd you say? Delinquent, something, but no liens is just, that's.
He cannot have any tax liens.
Right.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. I would make sure he's current on all of his taxes for sure.
Yeah, so maybe no tax liens, you know, do about where that placement is, I was saying, it's not available.
Okay.
Do you think that we shouldn't ask for his financial statements? For twenty twenty-four, he'll probably close those in January? Because are we going to have enough time to evaluate financials? Because there's, there's something, there always is something for the private business. And you need to be able to have the permission to inquire and for him then to respond with evidence, whether he has it or not. Because you want to be ready to sign for the grant March first, for Scott, or say yes or no. And you really got to give him time and, and the board time to evaluate the financial condition of the.
Yeah, the reason I went with February, Jeannie, was just because he'd have a good idea of what full year twenty twenty-four was at that point.
And I don't think we can move it up much for, there's, we're already December almost, so it's not fair. I, I, I think February first.
Well, he has to close his books for taxes.
Right.
Right, well, that was it.
Now, he'll have his income tax and his taxes. He has to close his books. So Carol, unless I'm wrong, he, he would close his books December thirty-first, correct?
Or slightly after that. I certainly wouldn't be doing it in New York City, but yeah.
You know, and it's an LLC, right? It's not.
I don't know how it's incorporated. It is incorporated. I didn't ask it. It was a C Corp or an LLC. I don't know. We didn't ask it.
But you, I think you guys got to give yourselves enough time. That's all I'm asking. That would be my, my concern. That's my concern right now.
And you don't have another offer grants?
Right.
I mean.
They're saying the earliest is March, right? And, and, and if, like, looking at, like, even the, the small projects fund, like, I mean, how long ago did we know about New York Forward? And we just got the grant.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is just hitting me really in this talk tonight that this grocery store may not be open at all.
Well, I think.
Well, it'll open the way he is.
It'll be open the way he is. And like I said to him today, I said, you know, if you want, while you're close to rip part of the shelving out, and, because maybe not having some shelves is better than having shelves with nothing on it.
Was there any discussion on, you know, changing the layout?
Yeah, I think that's, and that's why I asked for the footprint. You know, I mean, I think he's got stuff in his mind, but, but I think he's still been, you know, closing down everything. And that's why I felt, you know, let's give him December, let's give him January. And if we're not going to hear, we're not going to have to sign a, a grant agreement until sometime in March?
Or later.
Or later.
The longer, the longer he is away, like, just, just the personality, you know, you get to read people after a while. The longer he's away from it, the more he's going to be away from it. I, I, I just think it's, it's not, you know, putting him under our thumb, but he needs, if he's interested, that's the first thing. I don't, I don't know that, that Mike is interested in. If we had said three years, he, I don't think he would have, he would have gone, oh shit.
But he knows it could be three to five years with the grant, correct, Scott? Didn't, I mean, you've mentioned to him that normally these grants are three to five years. And I know that that family had had a grant on the, the store on the corner where the Twist of the Cape is, that they had gotten New York State grants and they had stuff on that for five years. So it, it's not unknown to them that, that we're being, we're showing a minimum here.
With the proposed footprint, does that include a business, an updated business plan of how he's gonna like do the rental space and stuff like that? I know we talked about that on the phone.
The only thing I said to him is, I would say, I said, you know, let's say you were going to cut the store in half and half of it's going to be hardware. I don't need you to know what the layout of the hardware is going to be. You just need to write, you know, draw the line, say this is how the store is going to be configured and write, you know, Ace Hardware in here or whatever, just so we know like what the overall footprint is.
Well, maybe, it may, there may be a summer, a summer or a, you know, the volume season may have a footprint and then the non-volume season, cut it down and I don't know whether, now, partitions, but I, but something, cut it down in what they're stocking. Just don't try to be everything. And so many people have said that to me, just, if he just tried to be a little simpler, but have whatever he has looking nice, especially fresh produce. If that looks, that looks appetizing, so to speak, or pleasant to look at, but.
And I think, I think what we have to understand is right now the family is, for lack of a better term, grieving, right? This is, this is hard. It's a small town. They have been a major player in this town for twenty-five years. And I think that some of this is, as it sinks in, that there's a chance to turn the page and become that family again as, as a, as a focal point of the community. I, I think you'll see the attitude become more positive. I mean, Mike was overwhelmed with gratitude as we had this conversation today. I would say that that would not be an overstatement of how he looked. So that's, that's kind of where we are. At this point, I would like to see, unless anybody has any other questions or comments on sort of, you know, we'll continue to talk about this, right? We got to get a lawyer and, so I need a, a motion for a lawyer to write this up because we'll have to pay somebody to do that. And then I would need to have a, first, the motion and agreement by the board to allow Scott to submit for the grant. So that's the first question that we've got.
And one other thing that you, everybody needs to be aware of is that, that we are not quite even registered to apply for a grant and Scott's working on that strongly today.
Yes, yes. So, you know, because they switched to a new system. Of course they did, they're doing all of this.
I motion for Scott to work for us twenty-four hours a day until he gets his grant.
It might be, it might be that.
Take advantage of that motion.
I'll need to apply.
All right. Okay, so we got Dan motioning legitimately and Dave seconding, all in favor. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried. The second thing would be to authorize me to figure out an attorney to help us draft this thing up. It's not going to happen tomorrow. But, you know, in the next month or so to, to work this out so that we have some skin in the game. Mike was going to take this to his dad, have a conversation. There might be some back and forth. I'll let you guys know via email.
So they're partners or whatever?
His dad is the president, Mike is the vice president of the corporation, so.
I motion for you to do the research.
Okay.
I, I really, we don't know what the condition of the building is in. I know that there's apartment above and that's probably been upgraded to some extent. If any of this equipment, you know, electrical around here, electrical in most places that are older, leaves, leaves a lot to be desired and I'm not sure that there's enough in the installation piece here to cover. I don't think that there's a problem with propane or, or anything else. The HBAC is pretty sad, but wiring I would be concerned about, but it might be a panel. Capacity need.
Scott, when he, when we actually, the level of granularity that Mike has provided us to get us to the three oh one, can you just explain to the board like when the, the agreement comes for the grant that it's actually agreed to at a higher level? Can you, you and I talked about that on the phone. Could you tell the rest of the board that?
Yeah, I think as we've seen in like other state grants. Yeah, I think um, as we've seen in like other state grants. You know, there's a work plan and goals that you have to meet and it's not specific that like he installs. Three coolers that are sixteen feet long and one old counter. I mean. It's going to be more generalized along the lines of upgrading equipment to be more energy efficient or reduce his his footprint. Um, so if it comes down to the budget and he's short and he needs to, you know, eliminate one cooler, it's not going to affect the grant, so. So we will have some wiggle room and those things can be worked out after it's awarded when uh, there's usually some back and forth. For the contract and the the work plan. Um, they usually allow you to 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 make a minor adjustments to it as long as you're meeting the. Goals of the grant application that you submitted. And then during the process, uh, you know, you can also amend or modify it as long as you're meeting your goals, so they they give you the opportunity.
I I assume that they, that what you do in-house. Needs to be, if if it's infrastructure, that it has to be code compliant.
Yes, oh, for sure, yes.
That could be fifty thousand dollars easily.
Well, the other, right, but the other thing that's in play here that we're not talking about is the small project fund. Right? So we just got the grant agreement for that. That's the three hundred thousand dollars through New York Forward. Um, clearly, they can also apply as part of that three hundred K. Now, obviously, there's a lot of businesses downtown and we're going to have to spread that peanut butter pretty thin. But there could be things where even. You know, and and the timing is the same. It's like the money comes in in spring of twenty twenty five. So he, you know, he could take, you know, some stuff and say, well, instead, I might need more to upgrade the electrical. You know, I had somebody come in and look at it, um, so I'm going to apply for. Small project fund to do the electrical upgrade, right? So he can, he could play in that other field of the three hundred thousand. Of which we now have three uh, three RFP responses to administer that grant. I have not.
Is there a cap to this?
Is the three, they have to, uh, they can only get seventy five percent. Is the way the three small project fund. So let's say somebody put in for a hundred thousand dollars of that. They can only get seventy five, they have to pay twenty five, but the twenty five K can be in kind, so they could do something.
And we only have three hundred thousand for.
For everybody, right? So, but I'm just saying that there are, there are, you know, like he's got a point of sale register in there. You know, he could say, I'd like to do the point of sale through a small project and now I got another ninety five hundred dollars that I could use on electric. I mean, you, we can have some give and take. It'll be interesting to see what the businesses come in with. Anyway, um, all right, so I think we had a motion for Mandy to uh, work out the details of this. I'll keep you guys informed. Can I have a second? Thank you, Bill. All in favor? One opposed? No, all right. Um, the only other thing I wanted to bring up, which is now part of the agenda. Is every December, we have a problem because the the concert is on the second Thursday of the month. So instead of us going down the same path over and over every year. I would suggest that when Casey puts the twenty twenty five schedule together. We make that the first Thursday of the month in December. Everybody good with that? I don't think it's even a motion, it's just a, and then do we want a schedule in July or do we just want to skip July? Those are French.
We can wait and I think.
Yeah, all right, so leave leave July, but let's make December that first Thursday.
I have one thing I want to say before we close. When Mary had mentioned the LDC has not used, we shouldn't use our funds for one business. I just want us all to take a little thing home tonight. We've had to fight for the bus, we had to fight for childcare, now we have to fight for this. We need to look at our priorities. Our priorities aren't ever pretty business. It is and it isn't, but our priorities need to be people. And keeping people engaged and helping them stay here. I send my piece. I feel like I'm always person fighting for the people.
Yeah, I think I've spent a hell of a lot of time on the bus. Trust me, I was doing the bus route all afternoon.
I'm not saying that you weren't. I'm saying that members didn't want us to pay for the bus. I'm not saying any individual person, I just think as a board in whole, we need to keep that in mind.
I agree, I agree. I mean, it's, it is about the economic development and I will tell you. That the first speaker, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read my trip records. But that first speaker totally reversed my mindset on how I've been thinking about this.
Yeah, no, I liked your report and I meant to say that at the meeting the other night, that's a great course, thank you for sending it.
Yeah, but I I'd love if I can get this guy to do, do you call her best referee? Because uh, it was, he talked about the need to focus on a tourist economy. So, you know, that feels contrary to what you're saying, but his idea was. That if you can get the tourists to really have a delighted visit. Then, because the millennials want to live where they like, they move. And everything, all the money from the tourists upgrades all the services for the people so their year round residents are happier. I mean, it was just this, but he just did such a great job, so.
I'm saying it needs to be balancing, I can't, I'll just water.
Oh, I think so. Well, I mean, right now, we're going to have to lend money in for the.
I agree, but I feel like some of this stuff in my mind shouldn't be a question. And I know that's why we have a board, but. If we don't have people here, there's no point of having a board. There's no point of having the community, like, we need people. And our school is growing, Kate Vincent's school, but like. Like, our school is growing. We're having more people in the community. And but we just need to keep that in our.
All right, with that, can we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? All right, Bill motions. I think Dan was the second. He's already leaving. All in favor? All right, seven oh six, seven oh six. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Scott, keep me informed.
I will keep you updated.